All right, we're recording now.
I don't know, is Cochise Connection on there? Is nowhere?
But I have some copies.
You have some, okay.
But it's just a ridership report.
Oh. Yeah, this is just our numbers.
All right, so this is the Transit Advisory Committee starting Tuesday, March 12th, at one, at 1:03 PM. The City of Bisbee Council Chamber is at 9:15, South Torreville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. And this is a special session due to the last one we had to cancel. Roll call, we don't have a Bisbee citizen or local business at this time. We do have Rita Smith. Is she?
Yes, she's.
Okay. We don't have a local disability committee member, but they are supposed to be coming. I run the the disability, Committee on Disability, and we are supposed to be having representative come, but they don't have anybody at this time. Humberto?
Present.
Present. Lorena Valdez, Transit Coordinator?
Present.
Present. Angelica Novo?
Yeah.
She's not, okay. Jessica?
Present.
What?
Seal Sierra Vista?
We don't have anybody.
Nobody, okay. Olivia?
Okay, she's no longer.
She's not, okay.
She was just helping.
I'm Maria Nacita.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm present.
Maria is in, okay. She is here. Angel? From Muckox?
I'm present.
Okay. And Gerald Hirsch, he's
He wasn't able to make it.
Not able to make it, okay. Anna Klein, our city liaison, is, Council Liaison, is not present. And myself, Matthew Gurney, is here. And Logan Dodd is not here. And Jesse is not here. A dot, okay. We have no call to the public at this, at this meeting. So we'll move on to item number one, which is approval of the minutes from the August 16th, 2023 meeting. Does everybody have those?
I probably don't.
The meetings? The meeting minutes from the August 16th?
No.
Did you email them?
No.
Okay. All right, so I'll, I'll just review them. We had Rita Smith was there, we had Humberto, and Jesus Rivera was there. Lorena was present, Jessica was there, Olivia from Benson was there, Gerald Hirsch was here, and myself. We approved the minutes from the June 14th meeting. Humberto motioned, and Olivia second, and everybody, and it was approved unanimously. Item number two was a financial statement, which Matthew Gurney reviewed, but there was no action. Item number three was the Cochise County Jail stop. Right, I talked about the schedule change to pick up at the, at that stop. There was no action. There was a schedule change discussed and suggested made to speak to Aubrey Perry from ADOT, which that was done. And then... Oh, hey, sorry, I should have passed this around to someone few seconds.
I think I gave you one.
Okay. Okay. Item number four was presentation of second draft brochure for tourists to look at the ride, look at and ride the bus. That item was tabled. Item number five was ridership report and other news, which came from Humberto. There was no action for that, though. Item number six was the Cochise Connection report, which was, came from Humberto. And then item number seven was comments of board members. Myself and Lorena said that we would speak with Aubrey regarding the schedule change and needing a study. Item number eight was future agenda items, which was schedule change and brochure review for draft. And we had Jared's motion by Humberto, second by Jessica, and all approved unanimously. So that was kind of a review of the minutes.
Angel, you want to approve the minutes?
I'll second.
Jessica approved, and Rita second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved by the committee. Thank you. Okay. So, do we have the financial?
You don't have them?
I have the
It's just for the bus budget.
Which, what do you, what do we have?
We haven't really purchased anything.
Oh, okay. The, you're talking about the actual budget? I don't know if I have it up on here.
Except for the contract.
What's that?
Except for the, oh, we keep paying the, the contract to Douglas, and basically, those are our purchases for the bus. We don't really purchase anything else.
Yeah, there's no purchases.
Just off the supply of amounts of money. And the only thing we got from the last grant was the lift, and we already purchased that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's been purchased. That was divided by, between the bus, the bus grant and our sanitation department. And that was approved by ADOT. They said that was okay, we told them the percentages, and that was approved, and we made that purchase. And split the cost between those departments of that percentage, that was approved by ADOT. It's a four-post lift, lifts the whole buses off, off the ground completely. Because previously, there was nothing that we had that would do that, so.
Yeah, it's very helpful.
Yeah, yeah, that'll help with maintenance, so. Anything else you want to bring up with the financial?
Well, no.
Yeah, we put us for the grant, and we have some reviewing, we have to review a couple things with the grant.
We all did, right?
Yeah.
But we all got the same, whatever, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it said, do you have anything else coming out here that you're going to talk about the grant? Yeah, I'm live in Florida, at the grant.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm in Florida, yeah. So that was submitted on the 20th. Or, no, budget, oh, meetings, oh, yeah, we scheduled a budget meeting with ADOT on the 20th to review that. That's item four. But we'll, we'll go, sorry, I forgot, that was item four. All right, sorry, I skipped to item three. Item number three, Cochise County Jail stop. Discussion on any issues since it began on a call for pickup. So we, we started a call for pickup for the Cochise County Jail. And I haven't heard of any
They called a couple of times from the jail saying, you know, that, they were calling me for the call for pickup, and I said, no, and then they called and said that they couldn't call before 5:00, or, or 5:30 or something, and I know that the girls had said yes, so I don't know what they resolved, because I asked them to call Douglas.
And they, they were calling, we received a couple of calls.
There are not very many, though.
And they're not that many, at this time, there's not that many, maybe one or two. But we reported that to the riders, and they went, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
That's, that's what we have with the county.
I think, I think once we get the bus shelter in place, which is supposed to be coming, it should, I'm guessing that might ramp up a little bit.
So the cost for the shelters coming up from the county?
Yes.
They're, they're paying for it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the city will be installing it, and we'll be paying for the concrete foundation for it, and we'll install it as well.
Okay.
But they're, the county is paying for the shelter. We, we got them in touch with our, the contact that we use for our shelters.
Our shelters.
So it'll be the same, pretty much the same as like what's the, the newer ones that we've gotten over the last few years.
Okay.
So. Try to keep all, everything going forward, being, looking the same.
Yeah, okay.
And right now, we're using the, the bus passes that Seago gave us. Because we've got to get them all used up by the 20th, or by the end of April. So, but we do have special bus passes for that particular pickup.
Those provided a gummy tape, or?
No.
We have passes that are expiring in September now, too.
Okay, yeah, we don't have any of those yet, so.
I can give you some.
Okay.
Okay.
But yeah, we pass those out to the county.
No, we just made them a different, it's kind of mimicking the monthly, monthly ones that you give me.
Okay. So. Any questions or comments on item number three, with the Cochise County Jail stop?
No, if we can just get rid of the passes that I have first, maybe, because they do, I think, expires in September.
Okay, those, those, uh, bus pa, bus passes, yes. That's what I've been doing, Jessica, I haven't really given out the new ones that we made. So I've been providing them with those.
Okay, thank you.
And they're supposed to be putting Cochise County on them, I think the next batch, I'll just put it on, on it myself, so I can, I know when they're coming. But they'll have a, a little report, right, on how many call for pickups, do you use that?
Yeah, we're keeping track of that, because I mentioned it's only been like
A few.
With also, we're probably assigning another line item, about power management spreadsheet.
Oh, okay.
So that we know, you know, how many.
How many?
But we do need to get, through the passes that they put in Cochise County, I live through, they will know once.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
So those, those are managed by the Bisbee account, right? When they open the fare boxes, if they put in.
Yes, they put them there, and they come back to me.
And they come back to you, okay.
Yeah, I don't know if any of them are going to Sierra Vista, because those will also be used, I think, to go to Sierra Vista. But I don't know if they've, if any of them have gotten on there.
Got them all the way over there?
Yeah. But if, we've only had a few.
Yeah, it depends, just a few, so we're.
Okay, all right. Any other comments?
No.
All right. I do appreciate, you know, I have buddy's help on that, that, all those really joint effort for getting that set up, and, and so we appreciate, you know, Douglas's help, Seago's help on that as well, getting that finalized.
That was a learning experience, because
Yeah.
Because our city manager didn't know that, it would, it had a process, we could have just do it like from one day to the next.
Yeah. Yeah, he, he was like, I want to, let's get it done now, it's like, well, we can't exactly do that.
It doesn't work that way, it's kind of a long process, too.
Yeah, so. But yeah, all right. Item number four, do you want to give an update, kind of, about item four?
Well, we submitted our, our grant when it was due, and we received a letter back with four items that were others that I've, I've already uploaded two that, we just kind of mistakes that I uploaded the wrong form. I'm working on the substance abuse policy, that's why I asked you for it. Because you have a special one for the, for the drivers, for the transportation, and we only have for our employees, so. Jesse, Jesse informed that we have to do it like that. And since we don't hire them, we don't have one specifically for that, so I'm just going to mimic Douglas's.
Oh, okay. But you're asking about yours?
Yes, my, it's just my, yes, City of Bisbee. And then Jessica, did you find out anything on the other item, on the GTFS system?
Yeah, I sent you an email yesterday morning. Just let them know that Seago's working on that, and that it'll be taken care of before the due date.
Okay.
He said that if that, if his real, uh, fine grant doesn't come through, then we'll find a way to save it, so don't worry about it.
Okay, okay, got it, thank you.
Yeah, because they haven't given out the award yet, so we're just waiting, it should be like this month or next.
Okay, and then that's due at 3:00 tomorrow, so I'm trying to get that done today.
Yeah, I'd like to say that, they were requesting, they were requesting that we provide that same, I guess, the same information for the GTFS.
Yeah.
They were saying they would not supply, provide any, you know, reporting, every monthly reporting for the past year, and, you know, stuff like that, but we have no way of accessing our GTF links that they were requesting, we, so there's no way we can make any reports, so that's what I responded, you know, that I know that we, there's no way we could have made.
But you already have your system up? Your buses are already on there?
We had it up, but it expired, but in like around 2022. And there's no way we could have accessed, updated, or do anything with the link, so that's why we kept asking them, you know? Let us know what it is, or how we can access it, they never responded, so that's what I responded, I told them, you know, that we didn't have any access to be able to do anything, or get the reporting, or send reports, so not what I told them, you know, we were not able to access the GTFS, or and that's why we were requesting the funding to be able to, you know, get the company to install it, go through the whole process, so we can be able to access it, so that's why we're asking for the funding.
Oh, okay.
So, but they said, no, you haven't reported anything, it might affect you if we funded or not, so, I mean, how can?
Oh, got it, okay, so they want to report trends.
Yes, from the past year, so we've been asking them, you know, how can we access it, how can we get into it, because it expired in 2022? So I'm just waiting to see what the deal is with that.
Okay, and that's all I have to report, really, and then I guess it's a waiting process, and then after that, we know what happens? Do we know when?
We have to do, are you scheduled for the meeting?
Oh, yeah, that's right, we have a budget meeting on March 11.
Go through the, whatever question they might have, and then after that, they, they'll give you know when the budgets are, if they're going to be approved.
Yeah, so we're meeting on the 20th of this month with ADOT to review that. Any questions or comments?
Nope.
Item five, presentation of second draft brochure for tourists to look at and ride the bus.
Okay, so I have a few brochures that I updated a little bit, so we just need to review them again, and I'll go ahead and send them to, to you, Angela, Marita, and Jessica. And if you have any comments, just go ahead, or any suggestions, that's great. I've got two formats, I've got a landscape, and I've got a vertical one, so.
I, I've raised the same questions for months.
You want, you want to?
Well, I, I think in order to really get a final product, and I've done these kind of things in my past. One is we need to know, are we looking at a tri-fold, are we looking at a booklet? I mean, you really got to put this many pages? That's one of my first questions.
Okay.
My second question is, what are the guidelines for what's included? If it's oriented toward tourists, there's some things in here that don't seem very touristy to me. And so if we were going to do a tri-fold, I would say that we would want to trim down what we include, and really focus on the things that might be tourist interest.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
And then, or is it going to be an informational one? I guess we have, we started with.
And there's no reference to bus stops, or schedule, or anything, how do you tie it back to the bus system? Those are my three primary parameter questions, I mean, so I offered to work on it, but without answers to those three things, I don't know what to do.
Okay.
I mean, it looks nice, but.
Yeah, so I need to, so if we look at it and see, I mean, I don't, I would, I think we can add the schedule on there, and the stops, there are a lot of stops, though, and we are going to work, hopefully soon, redoing our schedule, because it's so long.
Right.
So we need to just shorten it up, and just have less stops.
Well, and stops that we think tourists will be interested in. I mean, we had some things in here that, you know, some apartment buildings and Tin Town, I mean, I don't know that tourists are going to want to go there.
Right. And then, of course, they, they might be interested more in like restaurants and things like that, that
In the bar?
In the restaurants and, and items to go eat somewhere also.
Well, and then that's the other question is, you know, are you going to include commercial stuff?
Right.
The long-term issue with that is businesses change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and you know, you're going to pick and choose who you include? That could get a little dicey.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that we should folk, my recommendation is that we go through here, and maybe, we, you know, in one meeting with the decision maker, go through here and say, okay, let's include this, 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 and this. Right? Dump the other stuff.
Right.
And it's going to be in a tri-fold, and then, then sync up with scheduling, and say, these stops, how could we present it to somebody? So that they find it useful. Does that make sense to you? Yeah.
Yes.
I'm happy to help, but those are my, my real issues, is, is it's, it's not aligned to the schedule, and we've included things that I don't think that tourists can. Or do we include walking directions, the Old Man House is nowhere near a stop.
Right.
Yeah.
And a lot of people aren't going to hike up there. So that's
So we need to give it a little bit more thought, then, and.
I think step one is a scrub, and step two is, do we want it as a tri-fold? Because that will really focus us, if we've only got this much territory to put it on, what do you think about it?
Well, I want, I mean, that's the main thing we need to look at, is what's the goal of it?
Really, what's?
And then, and then go from there. I mean, if we, if we add in all these extra stuff, it's just going to be a lot of information that they're not going to really look at.
It's not going to be interesting.
If it's too difficult, and there's so much stuff.
So we want to make it interesting, so that tourists want to get on the bus.
Yeah.
So we need to.
We need to go through it with the eye of somebody who didn't live here. You know, I would put on the Naco border crossing, and the new Camp Naco, I mean, those are kind of cool.
It doesn't, doesn't, it doesn't go by.
It goes pretty dark.
It doesn't go by Camp Naco, but it's like a lot.
It's like two blocks.
It is two blocks.
Yeah. And it's like two blocks from the border crossing. So I think it'd be, I think it'd be a fun thing, but it needs to be focused on our customer. And our customer are people who don't know Bisbee.
So I think, yeah, we need to probably have you come into, I mean, come into the office, where we can really, you know, schedule time to sit down and
Let's have a meeting go through, yeah.
And I'm trying to get a, I've had checked out for you from Jason at the library, so, because he sent you.
Because I, well, I was going to work on it, but I needed these guidelines, and I also needed to know what format, what software do you prefer I work in? Is this Word, or is it?
It's Word.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I used to have all those things, but I don't buy them anymore, now that I'm after. So if we could, we could set up a meeting, and go through here and say, all right, what should we include? Then I think it'd be a neat thing for the transit system to have something on it, that was kind of.
This would be something that we could add into the visitor center, in their repertoire of.
And if it's, yeah, and it's something that it really picks out the things that they're going to be interested in, and they're, go cook them up.
Yeah, ride the city bus, and see, you know, see different, whatever
Right.
Things around
Right.
Around the Bisbee area.
But things that are serviced by the bus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll check schedules and see, and then I'll send you an email?
That sounds fine, I'm actually in town until probably June or July.
Okay, good.
And then I'll be going until next week.
A final round, hopefully?
Yeah.
I think it would really make it, it would move us forward.
Okay.
And you, it's beautiful what you've done, but those are my.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else?
I'll land a brochure.
Any comments or questions on the phone?
Jessica, Marita? Thank you.
No.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe after I look at one.
All right, we'll send it over.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, any, anything else for item five? All right. Item six, ridership report and other news for the Bisbee bus.
Okay, I'm just going to go over the Bisbee chart and graph. The month of February, we had 2,013 riders. Went down, a little bit from the previous month, January.
What picture you want, sorry?
Uh, it was the, yeah, the graph.
Okay.
I have one of these. You can see the month by month, I will keep tracking the ridership, so this is in February, the month, number 2,013 riders. I was mentioning that the month before was 2,153. It probably has anything to do with February being fewer days, there were social holidays, and so that affects it, four, five days, that we didn't have any
Yeah.
Any days, so I dropped down sufficiently, so.
But take increase from the previous year in February.
Yeah, if you take it from the previous year, it did, but then we would have to look at the conditions from previous year, we were just coming out of the pandemic, so it's slowly creeping up, you know, it's but it, it's, it's a good, good number still, so. And on the bottom, the bottom chart, you break into more, more details, more, the demographics are like miles, hours, the number day of service, so you can see there's 24 days, so it's normally a month it comes to 29, 30 days, so there you can see that, the reason why. And then you can see the elderly table, the numbers, you know, you can see what, what's happening like there, so. But it's, it's a good total, 2,013, that's, that's good. The next page is the one that's for the entire month, the recent number of them. I don't know.
I kept trying to look at it, imagine what we were.
Whatever day is day by day, I want to have that for sure, it's an example I'm looking at, the month. It just goes day by day, February, and you can see the different columns, the elderly table, you can see the numbers right there for every day, you can see, you know, monthly classes, under-six, seniors, adults, students, that gives you the, the number, the total number for every day. Until you go all the way to the bottom, you can see the totals, you know, for every demographic right there. So you can see that the bigger number right there is the adults, the total is 769, and then seniors, those are the ones that make up the the bigger number of people riding. You can, you can see.
And these students are going to the high school? Or are they meeting the Douglas bus?
They are going, probably picking them up from the connection between, you know, that connection that we have right there, some of them
Douglas.
Going to Douglas, or changing at some point.
I don't know, some come from Naco.
Yeah.
They picked up Naco.
Yeah, so the ones in Naco that we pick them up, we do pick up a lot of people at the border over at that Naco, so. Any questions? Bisbee ridership?
I don't think so.
No? Okay.
Any questions? Item six? All right, item seven? Go directly into Cochise Connection?
Okay, the Cochise Connection, it can be the, is that one? Did you have it? The first graph. Um, the first graph is, is, will show the board for, uh, people that are boarding the connection. You can see we keep track of the last six months. You can see how it fluctuates, uh, went up and down, uh, from September of last year and then up to Jan, February of this year. Uh, it, it went up from January to February and, uh.
October must, must have been a busy month, because even in ours, it was higher than.
Yeah, it, it's, it has to do a lot with weather, what's happening, you know? It has to do with the school session, I mean, pick up a lot of students in the connection. So that, that makes up a lot of our riders, you know, the Cochise College. We, we get almost full buses. Uh, with the other two routes we have in Douglas, it's getting up to getting full. Up to the cross from the border and that's where it may be, uh, the border entry, that's where we pick them up, take them to college. It's, it gets almost the bus, one of the buses is that the passengers, the receives passenger, they get full. So there's a lot of students coming from.
Um, what do you think, how do you think this, uh, new border entry is going to be affecting you guys'?
Uh, I don't think it's going to affect anything, you know? It's, it's not going to affect it. It's basically about a commercial, uh, you know, trucks are not being moved and, and, in fact, it's going to be better that, that we're going to have the buses that need the, uh, commercial buses, trailers and everything in there, uh, because those are the, the ones that are damaging the roads and the roads and others are pretty bad, so.
Yeah.
And that's, it's, I don't know, Bisbee, how it is, but in Douglas, it's just pretty bad. And you can imagine the buses running eight hours daily through the same roads that are all ill cracked and much stuff like that. The buses start, you know, getting, you know, worn out and all that, so. But I, I think it's a good thing that they're moving the, uh, commercial buses, I mean, trailers and everything.
Yeah.
So it's, it's going to be a good move, a good investment that they're making in there, so. But, uh. The next one is, uh, where people are getting out of the lot, the boarding part. You can tell where, uh, they're getting out. Uh, you can see right there by the, the chart, it's, it's, uh, Customs and the, uh, Douglas, uh, Cochise College. And you can see, you know, that those are the big ones, those are the ones that are, uh, having the most numbers there, so. Then we also have Sierra Vista that we take to, uh, a lot of people that go to work or chappie, go to the mall, go to the hospital. So it's, it's slowly, but it's, it's increasing, the ride shift is increasing also, so that's a good thing with the, uh, connection, so.
Some of them are going all the way from Douglas to Sierra Vista.
Yep.
Yesterday.
Yeah, they are, you know, it's, that's, uh, that's, it's a good, uh, route, uh, so it provides transportation for a lot of people that, uh, depend on. Yeah. And then, again, the, uh, next chart, it's, uh, by month, daily, and it is the, uh, the boarding. And again, it's the same numbers, uh, but in, in, uh, daily, daily, uh, so you can see where they are getting up, where the, the boarding, so. These, these are charts that are good to look at, kind of track here, you know, what's happening and where they are going, so. Any, uh, any questions on this?
No.
No.
Okay, all right, well, that's, uh, uh.
What's P O E?
Hmm?
P O E?
Uh, Poro Venture.
Yeah.
That's at the Poro Venture, you're all in Douglas.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the Customs.
Yeah, I see that, nice. You call it Customs on the other one, okay.
They have, there's so many columns that they.
Yeah, you can fit very well, I get it. I'll add that one.
All right, any questions for Rento for Cochise connection?
No. No.
Thank you. All right, that moves us on to item number eight, uh, comments of board members. Any comments from any board members?
I feel like I'm the only civilian that's showing up.
Yeah, we don't have, we, there are other, the other positions are vacant. Uh, we do have a possible A D.
Yeah, yeah, with my, yeah, I don't know, we're not supposed to talk with the, with, uh, with comments, but.
No.
But.
But the other two positions, I mean, is no ideas?
Nobody has applied for anything.
Have you put anything in the paper saying inviting interest or?
I believe that they, I don't know if the clerk does that, where these are the positions that are open for, for the committees. Um, I'll have to ask her if she does that.
Yeah, I, I'm just curious.
Because we've had business people like three times and they haven't even showed to the P Ds, they have a council, it's like.
It's got to be a transit nerd. I mean, they've got to have some understanding or appreciation or desire to understand and appreciate transit.
Right.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Any other comments?
I, I have a comment that is, uh, just for information that one of our drivers, Tommy, uh, Arthur Bassett is retiring. He's going to be retiring, in fact, this is his last week.
Okay.
So we already have interviewed one, uh, one driver. We are going through the process of the, uh, background check and see if you can get his fingerprint. So soon, hopefully, if everything will go okay, we will have him start training the Bisbee route, so.
Are you sure?
Uh, the Bisbee, yes, this, this is, uh, one of the drivers that is going to be retiring. So this is the last work, uh, I mean, last week that he's going to be working, so. But we have one, one, uh, driver already interviewed and we're going through the process of the background check and fingerprint and all that, so. As soon as we do that and hopefully everything will go okay, we will start training.
Is he from Douglas or?
Yeah, from Douglas, yeah. Yeah. So we're, we're hoping that, uh, everything comes out, uh, okay, the background check and everything, so. In the meantime, we'll be providing, uh, uh, drivers from Douglas to cover his, uh, shift. Sometimes the same driver from here, Jesus, can cover the entire day, but it's not always possible. So we will be assisting with other drivers, other drivers. We have three of our Douglas, uh, drivers that know the route, they are working here, so.
All right, you go.
So we won't be suspending or doing anything like that.
We're missing trips.
So nobody is going to miss any, any of the, you know, the, the route here in Bisbee, so. I will be letting you know, sending you an email that who's going to be covering, so at least that you're aware when, uh, you know, Tommy is, uh, going to be off next week, so we'll start that, so.
Okay.
Okay.
And so, want to let you know, I'm diagnosing your, on your email for the city hall, um, coming up with some ideas for that, for the stop at city hall.
Oh, okay.
So.
All right, okay, yeah, if there was, uh, that new business they opened up there, it's very, it's taking, uh.
It's nice.
But it is kind of, there's some issue with the parking for the bus over there in the front that they have to unload somebody or they have to unload people or unload someone in wheelchair.
I know the people.
If they park all the way over there, the driver has to come with me in the middle of the road.
I know the people, I can give you their phone number if you want to talk to them.
Well, the, the parking on the opposite side of the road, so.
Well, but is, is the business is not, is the business is not the problem?
No, I guess the.
It's just when I take deliveries.
The ones that are going to the, uh, actual business to, it's a cafe or what is it?
It's a coffee shop and cafe, um, it's very nice, but, but I do know the owners, the friends and neighbors, and if, if, if you need their delivery trucks to park differently.
It's not their delivery trucks, it's just people.
Customers.
The customers, yeah.
Wow, yeah, and there's nothing across the street, right now. But it could.
There is, there is a bus stop and it's, it's, there's a sign there, but they say, well, we don't see it, it's too small and it's not marked on the curb.
It's the one that's got the woman's cape and everything, it's.
But they still park in front of it, so, I mean, that's where the, when the bus arrives, where it's supposed to park there, you can't do that because it's already occupied.
Is it painted?
Yeah, it is, uh, but it's an old paint, I guess, you know, it's, so that's what I was requesting, like, you kind of let, let people repaint it or another sign and stuff like that.
Brighten it up a little bit.
So they don't have a, a reason to say, okay, because the driver's been told, well, this is a bus stop. Where does it say it's right there, well, too small and this and that, and I didn't see it painted, and they say, well, okay.
Yeah, I would say get a bright red curb and.
Well, we are going to take care of that, we're in the process of doing that, so they have, don't have any excuse to say, okay, I didn't see this or that. So we'll take care of it and, and we'll probably, uh, take, you know, resolve that.
It's going to get to be more of an issue when city hall is there.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's why I'm trying to come up with a permanent solution for that, so.
Yeah.
Curb cut or something, I don't know. Shit, that's too hard.
All right, any other comments?
No.
Okay. Uh, item nine, future agenda items. Anybody have any items for the, for agenda for next time?
We'll, we'll bring back, I guess, the brochure.
Yeah, let's schedule a meeting and, and, and put our heads together and, and get this thing moving toward production.
Yeah. We'll put that on there. Anything else anybody wants to review or bring up or?
Uh, no, not, not at the moment.
I guess we can, we can bring up the, um, uh, grant, u- update for the grant on that.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, have a meeting by then.
Yeah.
Will you know by then?
We should.
It's supposed to be three months from now, I guess by then we'll know. Uh, we, we got, they knew they were requesting, I mean, they were requesting.
We'll have enough.
We'll get the money, but we'll know.
Yeah. So, all right. Anything else, any other future agenda items?
Uh, no.
Motion. No.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
This is the, this is Angel O'Seagles.
Okay, Angel's second, okay.
This is interesting topics, listening to your routes and stuff. Monday, maybe my program will go a bit stronger to have one too.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.